2020 orders defending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's match 15 to 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen and/or watch the meeting either online via the town, on-demand video broadcast, on cable television on channel 191, or dial into the meeting at (74) 304-145, enter 1428 for the meeting number and 12345 for the access code. This phone number is only active to the public meeting during public meetings, to the public, sorry. No in-person attendance with members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite their deficit, we will post bio and/or video recordings, transcripts, or other comprehensive records of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay, could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the path of the United States of America and to the Republic all which is in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, first on the agenda, we have public service announcements. Mary, do you have any? No. Ian?
I do not.
Ace?
I have none, thank you.
Mike?
And I do not have any either.
Okay, we did get this, um, notice from the Parkston Recreation about a new event in Sturbridge, light up Sturbridge, a community decorating contest, December 4th, 5th, 6th, 11th, 12th, and 13th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Okay, um, you can go on the website, Parkston Recreation, for the rules. It's open to businesses and residential, and there are three categories. Okay, that ought to be fun. Okay, next, could we please have a moment of silence for all those affected by the virus? Okay, next on the agenda, we have our annual proclamation to Starbridge. Um, does everyone have a copy of it?
Yes.
Okay, but for the public, it says, "Whereas the Rotary Club of Sturbridge, Massachusetts and Starbridge, England, have worked to promote a bond of friendship between the two clubs." And whereas the people of Sturbridge, Massachusetts and Starbridge, England have taken part in cultural exchanges in an attempt to further that bond of friendship and understanding. And whereas the people of Sturbridge, Massachusetts are proud of the foster city relationship which has developed and continues to grow between our towns. And whereas we welcome all opportunities to extend our gratitude to the people of Starbridge, England. Now therefore, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Sturbridge, Massachusetts wishes to extend special greetings and wishes for good health, peace, and prosperity to the people of Starbridge, England. Sign the Board of Selectmen, September 21st, 2020. Is there a motion then to sign a greeting and send it across the pond? Mary, so moved.
Michael's second.
Any discussion? Chase, how do you vote?
Yes, yep, Chase.
Mary? Yes. Ian?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Jeff?
Yes, thank you. Thank you on the proclamation. It'll be on, um, the nice paper that we give to the Rotary Club by tomorrow afternoon. So Wednesday on, if you get a chance to come in and sign it, we can give it to the Rotary Club to send to, uh, Starbridge, please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Department Report, Conservation Commission. Good evening, Rebecca. Okay, would you like to go through or summarize your report, please?
Sure, yes. So I submitted the report. I hope everybody had an opportunity to review it, um, just to kind of go over some of the main points. Um, you know, I kind of said I wanted to, um, go over what the responsibilities of the commission is, you know, that aims a new board of selectmen member. And with that, just kind of say that, you know, we review both under state law and the local bylaw. So under the state law, um, for new projects, there's two permit applications that, uh, the state has, either a request for determination of applicability or a notice of intent. So both those require, uh, uh, public hearings and there's things that go along with that. So, um, the commission previously created what we call a letter permit application, and that's been something that we've been using for, for quite some time now. Um, but in this past year, what we did, they worked with the commission to establish an administrative review process. In that way, for smaller projects, um, determining the scope of them, it was something that they felt comfortable that I could review on their behalf. So instead of the, you know, the applicant having to wait for, um, one of their meetings, it's something that I could review, the specific project, um, condition them, they still had resourcing and protections, and the applicant wouldn't have to wait for that process. So it's something that could be turned around in a couple of weeks, um, at most a week. So that was something that we started this year. And I'll go over some of the permitting numbers, um, where you can see that it's been, um, useful for people this year so far. So, uh, with COVID, as with all of the permitting departments, you know, it's presented some challenges for us. Um, obviously, we had to change our meetings, just as you have, but a lot of our, um, permitting processes, like our applications, um, because we review both under state and the local law, um, we had to work to really revise a lot of our applications, um, how our permits are issued. So we did, we did work through that, and the commission's been meeting. They did put a pause on their meetings at first, uh, for a few of the meetings, but once everything was figured out, they've been meeting, um, right through throughout the summer. And now, um, with that, we've been still doing our site visits. So site visits are an important component, um, as part of project review. So for all of our projects, we go out and site visit, whether it's myself, the commission, or myself, uh, but we've been able to keep that moving forward for people with their permits. So, um, I went through, and I kind of structured this a little bit different. I think it'd be useful to kind of see these numbers and tables, and add some other project reviews in here too, or permitting components in here. So we broke down, added a few tables in here if you got a chance to see them. Uh, one thing that I wanted to point out is in the last reporting period that we did, we had 111 applications. Um, in this reporting period, it was 172. Despite the pandemic, it's been an increase, um, in permitting applications and some of our other, um, aspects of permits that, additional requests, I call them, that we have too. So, and then I broke it down, um, um, it kind of splits the fiscal year here a little bit. So here, according to me, to, um, July 1st to the end of the year, and then kind of broke it down from January 1st to now. This period is a little bit longer, obviously, because it goes to the end of projects. But, uh, with that, we just kind of wanted to show that, just that this year, despite the pandemic, we've, we've, we've been reviewing and approving a lot of projects here. So with that said too, um, a lot of these projects are ones that I would be able to show that, um, that I could review on my behalf. So I think that with, um, the tree removal, go through, January 1st through August 30th, we had it broken down for the tree removals. Um, nine, nine of those permits had to go in front of the board and were issued by them. And 25 I was able to, I was able to do by myself. And then with our wetland bylaw letter permit, um, they issued four, and I was able to issue three on my behalf. So that's 38 projects and proponents that didn't have to go to the meeting. So we were able to expedite that with the same outcome. So I think that's a, a good improvement. Uh, one of the things I wanted to point out that I didn't put on here too is for, um, with this reporting period versus last year's reporting period, uh, we saw a pretty drastic increase in our request for determinations of applicability. Um, the last fiscal year, we had 16 requests for determinations of applicability, um, and this year we have 42. Um, so that's a, that's a pretty big increase for, um, mostly what I would call like medium-sized projects. These are, you know, existing developed lots, whether you're doing house additions or, um, swimming pools in your backyards, uh, things like that, it doesn't really apply for, new areas worth clearing and land development is. So that was a big increase. Uh, for orders of conditions, which are the, the state issued permit, we have 27 for the last fiscal year, reporting fiscal year, we had 33. So a, a small increase there. And, um, even with the reporting that I did last year, um, we've been using the determination process a lot, um, with some projects versus doing the full notice of intent. Uh, and that kind of helps, it's an expedited way of reviewing and approving projects too for, for certain, uh, projects. So I think that increase is also, um, in part of a, allowing them to use those projects. So in addition to, um, the actual permits we issue for, for new projects, we also review, um, forest cutting plans, um, people when their permits expire and their work isn't done, they get extensions, we have extension requests. We have, um, what we call amendment requests, so someone might modify their permit, sometimes they have to do a formal amendment, or we call it a, a minor amendment, emergency authorization request, and then also, um, uh, enforcement orders. Enforcement orders are issued for violations, um, and this could be either someone had a permit and didn't comply with their conditions, or didn't work without, without a permit. So for this year, for enforcement orders, we had four certificates of compliance.
Thank you.
These are required when a project is finished in order to close out their project. Um, we had 31 this year, last year we had 29. Um, so a lot of, a lot of real estate transactions kind of, um, sometimes people forget to close out their, their permits at the end, and then when they go to sell their property, they come up. So sometimes people forget, we've had ones that have come back from the eighties, um, and then sometimes people, you know, finish it and close it out. So until they close out their permit, that permit is, um, technically a lien on the deed, they have to report it to the registry. So, um, and sometimes when it's with these older projects that come back, there's a lot of, um, research into the files and, um, review of the project. So it's, it can be kind of time consuming for some of these. So both the numbers I thought, uh, the forest cutting plans, um, I think we did eight this year with five the year before. Some of them weren't too far off from before. So permitting is, is a big part of what we do, but the commission's also responsible for the care and custody of our conservation properties, and then also for doing, um, educational projects, uh, with our species. So for our conservation properties, um, we have the care and custody of about 1,500 acres of conservation land, um, and then they also hold conservation restrictions on other land. So some of the bigger projects we worked on this year is, uh, the removal of dilapidated structures that were identified. Um, I was asked when I started to look into this project, they knew there was a few out there, uh, we identified seven structures. And then when we started to, um, look into the removal, because of the age of the structures, um, we couldn't get a demolition permit without doing a asbestos study. So, um, we've had that done, every structure was identified to have asbestos in it. Um, we had one of them removed in fiscal year 19, and then we've worked on, um, getting quotes, uh, to put proposals together to go to the Community Preservation Committee, and we'll be moving forward this year with the, um, remaining six structures. Uh, we'll be going to bid soon. I think you recently saw Robin King in front of you, um, for the, the contract with, um, Time Bond, I believe. So that was one aspect of it. Uh, we'll be getting that bid put together and then moving forward with letting through a tractor, uh, for that project. So, um, on our Heinz property, uh, we conducted an invasive species removal project, uh, the Heinz property, the historic farm, um, that the town acquired, about 85 acres, um, has early successional field habitat, uh, been working to manage that, um, for different wildlife species. And we were able to, uh, we had some additional funding from a previous, some previous work done, we were able to eradicate some autumn alleles out there, and we'll be moving forward with an additional treatment this fall out there. Um, one thing we'll be working on is, um, the demarcation of the Long Pond property. Uh, this is a property that was acquired with CPA funds. Uh, typically as part of the process of when the town acquires the property, all of the, um, property boundaries would be demarcated, they go out and they, they, um, blazed the property boundary, they flag it, they put signs up. Uh, it was never done out there, and, um, we'll take in Land Trust holds the CR out there for us, and that was something that they actually asked that, um, we worked on. So we went to Community Preservation Committee, um, received the fund, it was approved at town, um, town meeting, and that should be starting that project this week. Uh, the recent project I started working on was I had, um, a professor at WPI reach out to me, he had a group of students who were supposed to go over to Europe, um, for a project this fall, and with COVID that was canceled. So they actually are going to be working on, um, an educational project for us. Um, so they're working with them, and they'll be working on, um, doing interpretive signs. Um, we've been seeing a big increase in use in conservation properties, especially with COVID and everyone getting outside. And one of the things they'd really like to see out there is, um, adding signs along with the trail to kind of educate the youth, um, you know, on the history of the property, or fauna, uh, benefits of wildlife management, things like that. So, um, kind of excited to get that call, um, it's kind of a last minute thing, but I'm working with them and, um, right now there's some definitely used and doing a little research on those properties. So we should have something mid-October from, from them. Um, in addition, we've been working with the Trails Committee on some of their projects, uh, the Grand Trail Project, um, going through one of our conservation properties off of Park Bar, uh, they have their own WPI students who worked on the bridge project. Uh, they have another group of students who are doing a boardwalk project for the 501 Main Street parking lot. I'll be going out with them next week, um, to look through the back property with the wetlands, that can help them. Um, some other small things, uh, there's a couple Eagle Sound projects we're working on as well. So one of the things that we had started last year is, uh, we worked to reestablish the internship program at Tantascus. Uh, it's something that kind of fell off the radar, I think, in the conservation department. So last year, we actually had a senior who's interested in the environmental field, um, do a almost year-long, um, internship with us, she came four days a week in the afternoon, um, and we were able to kind of teach her about what the conservation commission does and my roles and responsibilities, um, bring her out, um, for some site visits, and just let her get a general understanding of what we do, um, even, you know, like I put in the report, reading a site plan is something that she had kind of never done. So, uh, we were looking at her school mark, um, and, you know, we're looking forward to, we had two more students lined up for this year. Unfortunately, Tantascus canceled their internship program this fall. Uh, we're not sure if it's going to go on in the spring, but if not, we'll have two more, um, in the springtime. Um, lake testing, something we do every year, um, that you're familiar with, it's funded by the town through the Conservation Commission. Um, we have the six lakes in town, um, we went out this year, we were able to actually have, um, high school students and elementary students go out and, um, participate in that. So I think that kind of summarizes most of the, the things that we've been kind of working on. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Yeah, good, good report, Rebecca. Um, been busy, and I also, I'm sure the commission appreciates you being able to do a little bit more work and cutting down on meetings for them, and also not always having, uh, proponents come in. Anyone on the board have a question or a comment? Mary?
I also just want to echo what our chair just said. I, I, when I read the report, I was very pleased that we were able to come up with a, a process to kind of speed the letter review. And I know that adds, as Mary said, work for you because it's not going to the commission. So I think that's great, anytime we can speed up the process for applicants, the better. And I was just excited about one project, and I didn't know if you could give us a little more timeline. I know you said you were working with the Trails Committee on possibly, um, a bridge to access the Riverlands property from the parking lot, uh, 501 Main Street. And I didn't, that's very exciting for that Trail Boardwalk project. And I didn't know what are the steps that we need to do there? Like, how far along is the Trails Committee in that project? Can we expect something by like next summer, or is that too ambitious?
Um, I'm not sure. I'd probably have to refer that question to the Trails Committee. I know they had to work on the proposal, and they did come up with some concept designs for the bridge, but as far as permitting, um, I'm not aware that any, they haven't start, they haven't started like the permitting process that'd be required for the bridge. So
Okay.
I don't know, but I would have to, yeah, refer to them.
So that I think Jeff can chime in a little bit?
Jeff, I can get a report from, uh, the Trails Committee on that if you'd like for your next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that would be great, because I think that's just an awesome way to tie in our parking lot with our Riverlands and, you know, kind of tie in our trails with our commercial end of town. But, and also, I just thought it was a great report. I like seeing the tables of, and the breakdown of all your projects. And even though I've been sitting on this board for a long time, I always appreciate it when you go over what you do again, because you do it every day and we don't. And so I like to have a summary of the, uh, of the work, whether it's a letter of intent or a permitting process. So, thank you.
Welcome. Okay, anyone else? Okay, thanks again, Rebecca, and have a good night. Um, you too. Take care.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Department of Public Works. Butch, online?
Butch, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I was unable to, uh, log into the GoToMeeting. Actually, I can see you all, but I can't get my mic and, uh, camera to work, so I'm, I'm calling it on the phone. And you can hear me, right?
That's okay. That's okay, we can only show six people at a time anyway, I think, right?
Say it again?
I think we can only show, I only see six people at a time anyway on my screen, so.
You, you can go up to the top of your screen and say, and there's a word that says view blank, and if you pull that down, it says view everyone?
Yeah, that's what I did, but, so I showed six of us, because I wasn't seeing Mike before. Was everybody else?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I, I must have done it wrong. Thanks, Jeff.
All right.
Anyway, I'll have to check my laptop. Anyway, I have, uh, I have three reports because I, I was bumped last time to the next month, and I was kind of lost track of which ones you have. So I have June, July, and August here. So, uh, in June, it's fairly routine, as, as it is every month. Uh, the only things I wanted to point out was we had some illicit dumping on Kelly Road of concrete, which pleased me, great job of finding out who it was. It, but that removed, so that was good. Um, in the first paragraph, line 11, it says, painted stop lines and sidewalks, it should say crosswalks. We went around and painted all the crosswalks before school started, so that was good. And then, um, the landfill loader, I got some money from the, uh, capital fund for the last town meeting, and the landfill loader is, uh, back and repaired, and that, that was a major repair. So that should be good for, uh, many, many years. And then, July, very routine in July, we did, uh, mostly roughing for the paving. Uh, every street that we pave, we usually go around and, and check all the drainage, check all the manholes and covers, make sure everything's going to be all set when we're done paving. So that's where we spent most of our extra time. Other than that, it was just mowing and, and all the usual stuff we do in the summer, sweep sweeping some, some aprons, stuff like that. And, and August, that was the big month, we did, uh, we milled and paved McGillpin, Stallion, Brookfield, Blackwater, Charlton Street, Chamberlain Ave. And then we did do a, uh, I, I debated, and I finally went for it, I did a thin layer on Maple Street, because I'm not sure if that's going to happen in the spring, or when it's going to happen, and I thought those people needed a break. So I put a thin layer on there, it's not going to last forever, but it'll, it'll keep it till we get it, uh, get the waterline fixed and the road paved. And that's it. Any questions?
Any, any questions from the board? Mary?
Hi, Butch, I just had a couple, um, I noticed that like with sick time, one month was almost 14 days, and another month was nine days. Um, if any of your workers were out sick with flu-like slash COVID-like symptoms, are we requiring them to get tested, um, or before they come back to work? Because I thought, I don't know, I thought 14 days was kind of a big chunk of time, and nine days. Are we asking if, if the sickness was related to those type of symptom?
Well, we haven't had anyone else sick like that, though. We have one person that was battling, um, some cancer, and he was out for a couple surgeries, so that probably took up most of that time. But that is a good consideration. We do ask that question when people are out sick, in fact, when, if they do call in, it's the first thing we ask. And, uh, I myself had a sore throat not too long ago, and, and I went and got tested before I came back. So yeah, that's, that's kind of our protocol at this point.
Okay, maybe, I mean, for the board to talk with Jeff, but I, I think it's good for all our departments if, you know, I also had a tickle in my throat a couple weeks ago, and I, I didn't know if it was allergies or what, but now, you know, with everything, before we were around other people, I went and got tested as well. So maybe that's a good conversation for maybe the board to have, if we establish a policy, maybe we have one, so.
Hey, Jeff?
We already have that policy, it's part of the items we've adopted through the COVID process, uh, since March.
Oh, oh, okay, sorry, thank you. That they were required to be tested, Jeff?
That either they take two weeks off, or they get tested before they come back to work.
Okay, now I have that. Okay, thanks.
Okay, Mike, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, uh, I've got, uh, two things. The first one is, and I noticed in, in both July and August, uh, that there was no time spent on professional development. I know that, know it's hard, because like, for example, Mass Highway has canceled pretty much all their programs and, uh, but Bay State Roads, uh, does have, uh, online, uh, training, and I just wanted to encourage, uh, you to, you know, if there are appropriate, uh, uh, programs to, to keep, uh, keep, keep active on that professional development, uh, thing, uh, if you can. Uh, the, the other, the other question I had was, I, I noticed on, uh, the new streets that we've paved, uh, where our center line markings, are, are we following, uh, Chapter 90 guidance as, as far as center line markings, uh, uh, or are we, uh, doing our own thing?
Well, what I found about the center line markings is, the guidance that the MUTCD gives you, that you're supposed to have, uh, double yellow line everywhere. I don't know if Sturbridge wants to adopt that policy, that's going to double the cost. Most towns do a single solid, uh, yellow line, uh, for, for smaller roads. Here, I'm just, at this point, I'm just following what was done in the past. If the road had a line on it, I'll put a line back on it, if it didn't have a line, like around the common, I didn't put lines. Um, I could look into that a little bit more, and maybe we can have that conversation later as to whether Sturbridge wants to adopt that, that double line policy.
Yeah, I, I, I believe there is a Chapter 90, um, guidance on that, that you're supposed to follow, MUTCD. Uh, many years ago, like 30 years ago, the governor, uh, he gave an exemption, and that, that was revoked, I, I think, uh, in the late eighties or early nineties, to, uh, to have that single yellow line. that single yellow line. And, uh, ever since then, it, you know, uh, I've seen more and more towns, uh, going to, you know, full compliance with MUTCD.
Yeah, we can certainly look at that.
Yeah.
And as far as the, uh, professional development, I kind of figured you'd be noticing that. And, uh, the only thing that I'm trying to do is, uh, we have the, uh, trailer going up and we're going to be moving the offices for the bus company over to the trailer this week. And I'm hoping to use that room and maybe Jeremy can get me a couple of PCs because right now we don't have computers available for the crews to do any kind of online training. But if I can get a couple set up in there, we can, uh, we can do a couple at a time, which would help.
Very good.
Anyone else? Butch, I just noticed on the, um, July report on the road maintenance, the six potholes on, I assume they're supposed to be shampoo road. The M's missing. Halfway down the paragraph.
Yep, you're right. Shampoo road. Of course, my, my daughters would tell me it's shampoo road.
Yeah, well, being Irish, I'm like, I can say it anyway.
Yeah, I've always said shampoo, but technically I guess it is spelled shampoo.
How's the brush cutting coming?
It's coming. We do it every day. We send them every day and if we have any complaints, we always go right to those first before we continue on.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Okay, thanks Butch. Have a good night.
You too. Night.
Night Butch.
Hey, next on the agenda, we have, uh, building inspector Nelson.
Good, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
We don't, we don't see you, but we can hear you.
Yeah, I'm on my phone. I didn't, uh, end up going on the laptop, so, uh, you'll just hear my voice, I guess.
That's okay.
Okay, I, I, um, I'll go through the sheet as I wrote it, that daily operation. It's, it's like it always is, you know, permits, reviewing permits, you know, questions, uh, zoning questions. The only thing that's a little different this time of the year is, is we have started doing our 110 safety inspections on, you know, the public buildings and making sure that, you know, they have their Egress, their lightings and their hoods are clean and their, you know, their sprinklers are updated with, with, with the right material and, and all that. Um, as far as zoning, I, you know, there's a lot of questions about zoning all the time, but usually I just put the main ones. I think one of the big things was somebody made a complaint near, near the, uh, near our center, uh, uh, that, uh, 274 Main is a porch there that's been going on forever and, and the person that made the complaint, they were right and it brought it to my attention. So I got ahold of the owner and they actually got the deck done now and it looks like they're finishing up the porch. It's right near our common, so it's a, it's a bad spot to have something uncompleted, you know? And they picked up quite a bit of junk they had around there. Then the other thing was that 508 International, we had a complaint, uh, about possible four-wheelers in their, um, uh, in their trails. Um, when this was written, we hadn't, did the site, uh, inspection, but since I wrote this report, we did. And, uh, what it ended up being is they, uh, it was from last year, uh, when they ran the four whee- wheelers on the, uh, trails, uh, at this moment, they know not to do it. They're not going to do it. They know it's a passive recreation. They know what they can do like snowboarding, skiing, walking, hiking. Uh, I, I, you know, at, at, at this moment, hopefully we should be okay with it. Um, Jeff's on top of it too. He was, he was, he was at the site visit. We have discussed it, uh, he has a game plan, uh, you know, if, if, if something else changes, obviously we'll be on top of it again. But other than that, I think it's resolved, at least presently. Um, and then as far as, uh, permit, uh, for July and August, we did 192 permits. So we're staying busy. It was close to 40 grand. It was 39,973, which, which, which is about right. You know, you multiply by 12 months. Um, the other thing, new commercial permits, I should say for, uh, July and August, not January to May, I, I, I made a mistake and didn't change that. And there was a total of 13 commercial permits. And, uh, I also want to say to, uh, to, to Mary Darling, um, Kazon, if you notice, there is a rail at those stairs between the parking lot and, uh, where you walk up for your service to go in the main entrance. So they did put that, that railing up, okay? Um, the other thing, uh, I'm in a, a bigger commercial project that's going on, uh, Pilot Travel Center. Uh, they, as everybody probably knows, they, they demolished that big restaurant, that, 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 that building. Um, what they, they plan to do there, they're reconfiguring and updating, taking the site more user friendly and keeping, you know, and helping to keep the trucks off of 15. They're going from six to nine, uh, gas dispensers, which should help a lot. That's like a 50% increase. They are working right now on the new travel center. Um, at this moment, they have, I think they actually have all the puddings in. They had half of them in the other day and I'm supposed to inspect the other ones tomorrow and they're going to have the other half of the pudding in for that 13,000 or 14,000 foot travel center. So that should be going up soon. The other, one of the other projects is 365 Main, that, that K, uh, K give a patient connection, a marijuana facility, um, that's really going up quickly. They actually have the whole shell up, shingle, they're doing the outside siding and, and stuff now. Uh, the inside, uh, it's, it's roughly 4, 4,900 square feet, almost 5,000 square feet. That side, they have it titioned, wired, insulated, if, they're going to be almost ready to shoot rocket. The other side, which is away from, away from the highway, it, it, right now, they don't have a, 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 anything going in there. They're hoping like for a health club or similar, it's 2,400 square feet. That, they, they still have the dirt floor and everything, but they have a, uh, two wall fire rated wall in between. And their game plan is to get the, uh, the marijuana facility open first and then deal with the, the back half or back quarter later. So, but they are moving right along. It's looking good. Uh, the other thing is, uh, the big things that's coming up, that New England cold storage on Ticker Road, uh, that's, that's going to be a large, uh, 74,000 square foot freezer facility. Uh, it's got like 14, uh, garage bay doors. Uh, another thing that it looks like it's going to be coming down a pike is that mobile retirement community next to, uh, Edwards Gas. Uh, it, it, they're proposing 65 watt above house and, and, uh, it's going to be a manufactured home, um, some single wide, some double. Uh, Stonewall Grill, uh, they're hoping to take over that lower level and the, uh, and that building that they're at now. Uh, then 423 Main, that's next to the old Basketville, the old building, they're, they're redoing that over and there're going to be five apartments, four artist studios. Um, when they're done, the building will look really nice. They've did a couple of the projects in town and it, 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 you know, that building really needed some work and, uh, they've got it ripped apart right now. Uh, you know, they're really, they're doing a, they're doing a good job as far as it, 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 it needed it and it's going to make it a lot better for, for us. Um, and Pine Resorts, uh, they were hoping to open soon. I think they were waiting, I know they were waiting for the state as far as, uh, their sewer permit and their water license. And other than that, they're almost ready to actually open and get their CFC. Uh, as far as training, a lot of it is, uh, virtual training online. Uh, we have, I have had one in, uh, Brimfield at the winery and I think we're going to have another one next month on training. So I've been keeping up with the training and everything and like everyone has been saying tonight, it is a little hotter because of coronavirus. Um, other than that, I guess that's, that's about the whole report if there's any questions.
Hey, any questions, Mary?
I just have a comment and a couple of questions. I just want to thank Nelson publicly, that railing at Kazon, I had a few seniors, not even together, different seniors say that they have difficulty going to Kazon because unless they have the handicap to park in the upper lot, that those stairs leading from the parking lot to the door, they can't really maneuver that. So I did go to Nelson about it and, um, the owners were not required, um, correct me if I'm wrong Nelson, but I don't think go to do it, but they did it as a matter of courtesy for the seniors. And I wanted to thank Nelson for staying on that. He persisted until it got done. Um, so that's good. And, uh, Nelson, I've got a couple of questions. Stonewall Grill, are they, they've taken over that home decor that moved to the country curtains, I assume?
That, that's correct. And, uh, what they're doing now is they, 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 go ahead.
I was just going to ask, are they staying upstairs? So it's going to be two floors? Are they just moving from upstairs?
Yes, they are staying upstairs and downstairs. They have a, they hired an architect at the moment. I, I, I've been there to do a site visit and, um, they're figuring out how to do the stairs to go from the first floor to the second floor, so you'll actually be able to go in between. That downstairs, that's a pretty, it's a pretty good sized area. I, I think it'll work out well for them. I think what's happened is, is, is the business has actually outgrown the upstairs. But to answer your question, yes, it'll be both floors.
Okay. And my last question?
The bar will stay upstairs and they'll be, you know, they'll be serving and walking through the stairs to the downstairs. And this way they can social distance better too. I think that's also part of it, you know?
Yeah, no, I know their business really took off pre-COVID, so I'm happy for them. Um, I know you said 501, uh, 501 International, the zoning issues have been settled. Um, is there signage and, uh, that land to indicate that only passive is allowed? Or how are they going to enforce that no ATVs? Do they have some type of signage place?
Well, when we went there for the site visit, anywhere that, that those trails, they have that, like, almost like a plastic caution tape where you've seen where they cordon off like fire areas and everything. And wherever those entrances, they've got them up there. So literally you would have to go through that with a vehicle, so you, you definitely would be aware, you're not supposed to drive a vehicle there, whereas people could just walk under it and check it up. Because, and we talked about it at that, at site visit, if they put up any type of chains or anything, what happens is if someone came through there and they were going too fast or not paying attention, people have got killed, uh, for various reasons for that. So I thought the caution tape is not a bad idea, actually. I think, I think it's a good way to go. And they are trying to watch people as they're going in, they're trying to make sure that they don't use it. When we went there, the reason with, I'm saying that they haven't used it since they had that meeting last year and everything, is the center of the trails, the grass has grown up really high, so you know they're not using it at all right now. And, 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 and I asked a question to the co-owner and I asked a couple of times and he, we made it very clear, and when I say we, the town, that he was not to use it and he definitely understands it. So hopefully, uh, you know, they'll abide by what they said and what they wrote at some of the other meetings and everything. I think the whole problem was it was, it was done earlier, you know what I mean? It's an old violation and he has been into the old violation, but there's no new one.
Okay. Uh, another question, just for my own educational purposes. Um, what, what is that land actually zoned for? What is the zoning for?
It's, it's, it's rural residential.
Yeah, so here's my question, um, and I understand the passive aspect, but that's a commercial bu- business. So I'm wondering why they can have any kind of commercial enterprise whatsoever, even bike riding or passive activity when it's zoned rural residential? For example, I couldn't sell bicycles out of my garage in a residential area, so I'm wondering why a commercial business can have a commercial enterprise on rural residential? And you may not know right now, but that's one question that I have. Uh, because I understand the, the passive versus active is really tied to the fact that it's in chapter protection land, so they pay less taxes, that it's open space. That's one legal issue. To me, another legal issue is it's not zoned commercial. So if they're getting a commercial process by opening up that land to a business, I, I don't, I don't know. Rural residential to me means houses and that type of thing. I can't have a commercial business. So I, I just would like to answer to that question, not tonight, but at some point.
Yep. Okay. Okay, let me just say this for tonight and, and I don't want to commit, like you said, I don't want to really give an answer tonight.
Right.
But I've thought about that a lot. We've talked about it a lot, me planning, myself, Jeff, and, and I'm still not sure completely. But think of other places where they have like corn mazes, this, that, and the other. That's residential, it's passive, and yet they're collecting a fee for it. So I don't know.
Where do we have that?
Well, I'm just saying, other parts of the state they have.
Yeah, well, we'd have to, yeah, I get it, but we'd have to like review our own bylaws on rural residential and look at the permitted uses and whether or not it includes a commercial enterprise of activity.
Yeah, see, that's the, yeah.
Maybe if you could just give me some writing so I can ponder that, but that's one of the questions that I have on that.
Yeah, yeah. Some of it's hard because if you look at the definitions, it doesn't always fit the bill exactly for the situation. And I think that's part of the problem here. It doesn't clearly state one way or the other, so a lot of it's going to be maybe an opinion and opinions can be wrong, meaning my opinion could be right or wrong. So I have been talking to other departments about it because I don't want to make a mistake and I want to get it right, you know?
Yeah. Maybe even legal. I, I, like I said, I have a small lot on the side of our house with a little hill and I don't think I could open that up to sliding and charge a price to, you know?
Yeah, I, I get what you're saying.
Which is on, which is on a different scale, but it's actually the same thing. So
Yep.
Maybe if you can get me something in writing, I'd like to kind of look at that.
Oh, okay. Good point though. Yep, yep. Okay.
Jeff, are we going to get a written report on, um, the inspection and status of everything as it is now?
Yes, um, there's been a draft report, uh, made today. We did some tweaks to it. You should have it by the end of the week.
Okay, no problem. Um, Nelson, uh, getting back to Stonewall Grill, I know you interact with them more than Jeff does, but they will have to come back to the Board of Selectment for their licorations because it will be a alteration of premises and it would entail notification of neighbors and an advertisement and a public hearing. So all that will take time. So I don't know whether you see them or Jeff.
Okay, okay. I'm glad you told me though. Yeah, 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 I knew it, but yeah, we can take care of it, right Jeff?
Yeah, we ran into the same thing with the Thai place too. And I do know that, you know, you're probably the first contact some of these people have and they're expanding and everything. Jeff, did you have any?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we, we've talked to them.
I, 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 I.
We've talked to them about that. They know and we're working with them on that.
Oh, okay. Hey, thank you. Thank you. Anyone have anything else for Nelson? Chase?
Yeah, Nelson, 205 permits, that seems pretty busy. Is, is that on par with last year or how are we looking compared to years previous? Even with COVID, it seems like that's a lot of permits going.
Yeah, I, 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 now, I, I can't explain this, but it seems like we're almost busy. I think it's maybe because of the interest rate. I think it's because people are staying home. So by staying home or they're doing more projects around their house and everything. I, I truly believe that's what it, you can't go anywhere, you can't do a lot of things, so why wouldn't you? I guess the answer is you work on your house, you know? Or whatever. So yes, it is busy right there. It is busy, yes. And I think that's the reason.
Hey, anyone else? Okay, thank you Nelson. Have a good night.
All right, you too. Thank you. Bye.
Hey Nick, we have the county administrators update?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. Uh, you can see my report. It's in front of you. If you have any questions on those four items, please let me know. I have a, a couple of other things. Uh, the tax rate was certified by the Commonwealth, so 1902 is the certified rate, which was what the, uh, last year was. So, uh, the, the Finance Department was able to tweak the revenues and expenditures to keep it at 90, 1902, um, for the, for the upcoming year, for the upcoming tax bill. Um, there is one other public service announcement. Um, the Council on Aging is going to host a home fuel heating assistance program at the senior center, um, Tuesday, September 30th and Thursday, October 1st. 30th, and Thursday, October 1st, from 10 to 3. That is on our website. So that'll be available to people that need fuel assistance. So I'll be out of the office, but available by phone and email on the 28th and October 2nd for personal business. So unless there's an issue with the board. We happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Okay, next, we have question items. Instead of reading through them all and going back, I'll just read one at a time and we can do it. Okay. A is consideration and possible action on exempting the poll workers and senior work off and veteran, veteran work off program from the requirement of the distribution summary and online training for the conflict of interest law. Okay, anybody have a question on that? Jeff?
Town Clerk Lynn Gerard is on the call. If you have any questions, she can probably elaborate on this request. Lynn, are you there? Lynn? No? Okay. I can answer questions if you have any on this.
Okay, any questions? Mike?
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I generally agree that, that it's, that the time and effort to have poll workers and senior work off people go through the whole conflict of interest training is, doesn't make a lot of sense. But I was wondering if the, you know, like our Conservation Commission is doing, have a very short briefing for the poll workers or somebody working on your work off, of the general principle of, you know, maybe just, just a five-minute talk or something to, to let them know that there is a conflict of interest law and that they can't accept things and, you know, and just, just a general overview of, of the law. I think, I don't know, I, I would think it might be useful so that they're at least aware of the conflict of interest law as opposed to not giving them any information about it at all.
That's a good idea. We can, we can put something together.
My feeling is, is the law does apply, but it's situations that, that it would apply to those workers. So I think just a brief briefing might be a good thing.
We can put something together.
Other question. I, I agree with Mike. Have they been required to in the past? I know we're looking for the exemption now.
Yes.
You know?
Yes.
They have, yeah.
It's current practice?
But it's- No, I agree with, I, I don't think they should have to, but an overview of what it's all about if you vote.
Okay.
Okay, you can work on that, Jeff. Okay, somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion that we exempt poll workers, seniors. Oh, we didn't talk about the other, are we also making it for the senior worker program and the veterans, or just one at a time?
Well, we can lump them all together.
Yeah, it's one of-
Okay. I'll make a motion that we exempt the poll workers, seniors in the senior work program, and veterans in the veterans worker program from the education and training requirements of the conflict of interest law, and that we provide them with an overview of the law itself.
Sounds good.
I can now second that motion.
Any discussion? Okay, Chase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on accepting the bid and selecting contractors for the Little League Field Lighting Project. Jeff, you want to do a little information, please?
I'll get it started, then Robin can join in. As you know, we've been trying to get the lights on the Little League field for some time. Town meeting gave us the appropriation based upon an earlier bid package that we had to reject because of the change orders. But it's been rebid. There was only one bidder. But that one bidder is responsible and qualified to do the work. So we're recommending accepting the bid. Robin can give us some details. She did reference checks and so forth on the, on the bidder. Robin?
Hey, Robin. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. So we had one respondent, Dagel Electrical. They are actually a general contractor and an electrical contractor. So they would be self-performing a large portion of the work themselves directly. And they did provide us with must-go field lighting in their bid. So their total bid is $237,732. It's $237,732, which includes LED lighting and includes all structural necessities for the foundation according to, with structural engineer drawings. So the references came back well over the last couple of days. Most people would work with them again. They are, and have provided positive references.
Any questions from the board? Any comments? Okay, the Recreation Committee did vote to endorse the acceptance of the bid. So do we have a motion?
Both, Chase.
Okay, you want to put the dollar amount in, Chase, of the-
Yeah, I accept the bid from Dagel Electric Construction Corporation for $237,732 for the Little League Field Lighting Project.
Mary, I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Mike, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you on that one, Robin.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have consideration and possible action on accepting a proposal to townwide pest control vendor services. Robin, you want to address that, please?
Sure. So over the course of the last year, we have been struggling with our current pest control vendors to get monthly services that we are comfortable with and that are adequate for our business. So in the interest of consolidating and not having multiple vendors, I use the state bid contract FAC 92 for pest control services. I actually put out a request to more than 10 vendors under that contract. Four vendors were interested and three vendors upgraded the services. Of those three vendors, two of them were very, very close, as you can see from the pricing comparison spreadsheet I provided. So we are recommending acceptance of Burgess Pest Management for townwide facility pest control.
Okay, any questions from the board? Someone want to make a motion then, please?
Um, I will. I'll make a motion to authorize the town to enter into a three-year service agreement with Burgess Pest Management for pest control for various town buildings based upon state contract pricing.
Second, Chase.
Okay, any discussion? Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase, how do you vote?
Yes, Chase.
Mary?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you. Jeff?
Can we go to C on the agenda, please?
Oh, I already scratched it out. Thank you. Okay. Trying to get over. Consideration and possible action on authorizing disposal, disposal of certain items by sale or auction. And we have the list there and Jeff also sent out an updated list.
I can put the updated list, I can put the updated list up on the screen so everybody can see it before they consider it? That's all right?
That's fine unless, I've already printed it out.
Okay.
Has anyone not seen it?
Sorry, I'm today.
The items in red are the new items. Robin's done a very good job of working with the departments to, to kind of clean out their offices and their storage places and these things that we're not using anymore and free up space and just get rid of the stuff. So these are the new items. So we would ask that you, you know, authorize the auction for all items listed this evening.
Okay, now Jeff, Robin, check to see if any other departments want any of these materials.
Generally speaking, we are at full capacity around the, the offices, which is why many of these are extra furniture that are disappear, are need to be disposed of. But anything that was viable, I did do that early on, yes. We, we've moved some things from the library to other locations during the renovation. The Senior Center has also moved some things to other departments, like animal control. We gave them some new cabinets with, not that were mouse-proofed. So we, we've been doing that for the entire year. And, and thanks to the employees for their help and DPW for their labor.
I have a question. Did, did, Mary? Robin, what's a look space heater? It says three small, just out of my own curiosity, three small and one large residential wood stove look space heaters?
The, the ones that look like wood stove, it's just the, I can-
Oh, I get it. Okay. And they're, they're obviously still working and safe going on?
They are.
Okay.
I'm, I'm trying to discourage the use of space heaters in our office facilities. So this was, this was a start. They were no longer using them at the Senior Center.
Okay, anything else? From anyone? Okay, somebody want to make a motion then? Yes?
Just one more comment. We would ask that the board, as part of your motion, state that town employees are not eligible to bid on these. I know that we have a policy on that, but that's something we would like to, to do.
This is Mike, and I'll make a motion to authorize the disposal of the listed items by sale or auction, and declare that the current town of Sturbridge employees cannot bid on the items sold or auctioned.
Second, Chase.
Any, any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase, how do you vote?
Yes, Chase.
Okay, Mike, how do you vote?
Yes, Mike.
And I vote yes. Okay. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on the designating of certain public health nurses for the Board of Health and special municipal employees. Jeff, you want to go over this one? And I see that Ken Lacy's on the line.
Yes. In a nutshell, the Board of Health wants to employ current town employees that are working for the Burgess School Committee or the Tantasca School Committee. And that would basically provide that they have two municipal jobs in the same municipality. And under state law, that can be done only under certain conditions. And those conditions are listed in the, in the cover memo on the item. One of those items is declaring those positions within the Board of Health to be special municipal employees. And then there's a host of other criteria. Each one of those persons holding that position must meet annually. And I'll let Ken talk about the need and the purpose behind it.
Okay, Ken?
Evening all. You hear me?
Yes.
Um, so we brought on a couple of the public health nurses, well, we brought a couple of school nurses back in the spring when they were, when the schools were shut down. And we used them over the summer as COVID contact tracing and follow-up for COVID work. When the schools came back in session, we realized that we have a potential conflict with them working at the school and working for us and billing their hours in both places. They're trained and they're knowledgeable. And we could really use them to stay in our, in the positions that they have. We're looking to post the position and bring on two additional on top of the two that we have. So we'd interview for all four of them, all four positions. But with the schools going back in session, we fully expect we're gonna be using these positions. I would think sometime in the next month through February, March, we would definitely use these positions pretty readily. So I, I would, I'm hoping I get support on this and get our public health nurses designated special municipal employees.
Okay, questions from the board? I just have one. Mary?
I support it, but I just have the question. Does it have any other ramifications other than the math law that doesn't allow the, you know, an employee to have both positions? When we designate them a special municipal employee, does it have any other ramifications associated with that status?
No. It has to-
Go ahead, Jeff.
Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, so the question, I'm curious on what you mean by other ramifications. I mean, there's limitations on how many hours and what they can earn, but-
No, I, I think the question's kind of straightforward. I understand why we want to make them special municipal employees, so that there isn't that conflict. And I'm saying by giving them that status, does it have any other effect?
It's still, the employee would still be bound by the conflict of interest law, regardless of the status. It's just that this designation allows them to hold the multiple positions in one community under certain conditions. But they would still be bound by the conflict of interest law.
Right. But it doesn't have any other effect other than allowing them to hold both positions? By giving them that status as a special municipal employee, doesn't give them more rights or duties or-
No.
No, not that I'm aware of. Nope. They're doing the same job. It's just they, we allow, allows us to pay them in two places on our, on the payroll, which is, which is the conflict that we have right now.
Okay, Michael?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure. You, you mentioned that they are getting paid on the payroll and not, not out of a, a vendor account. Because sometimes nurses work on a per diem as, it's more like a contractual nature than an employment nature. So we're paying, they are going to be on the payroll. Is that correct?
So I, there will be, for sure, there's one on the payroll and currently- uh, currently there are two on contractual, and they'll stay on contractual, but it'll allow the one on the payroll to, you know, be rehired on the payroll. And allow us to use any other Burgess nurses or anybody else we may employ as a, as an RN in the town and hold multiple positions if, if they're the right person for the position.
Yeah, I don't know if it applies to contractual relationships. It does, it doesn't apply to employment, but I don't know. If special municipal employees' status applies to having a contract with, with the municipality.
Yeah, they technically a sub... If they have a con... Are they technically a subcontractor in that situation?
Well, when you, when you designate them a special municipal employee, it allows you to pay them in two places, but they don't necessarily have to pay them in two places. You can have a contractor, still designated that way. Jeff, go ahead.
We will track that down if it requires them to be on payroll. We'll ask the Board of Health to make that change, but we will check with the town council on that and chase that down and make sure we have it, uh, answered.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, I, yeah, I've had a... Yeah, I've been in a situation where it was, the contractor, you know, they couldn't contract with the town. So, I, I just want to see what, uh, town council would say on that.
We can do that.
Chase, anything else from anyone else?
Yeah, I just had two questions, and the first is, if we do designate them this, Jeff, can we use the COVID fund from the federal government to pay for their position?
That's how... Hey, hey guys, Linda, I'm on the phone too. Actually, they are being paid through the COVID money right now.
Okay. And...
Let me qualify that, Chase. There's two pools of COVID money. One is the money that we receive from the Mass Public, Mass Department of Public Health. That's we have for the, uh, Health Department, and then there's the CARES Act money that the town has through, uh, and Jeff's overseeing that, that money. So, there's two different pools that we have that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I, my question was about the CARES Act pool, so if they, but if they are being paid through the COVID funds and not tax paying, I guess that was what...
Yep.
And the second question, say, the end game here, like, you know, say, year or two down the road, a vaccine comes out and, and this is going away, are you, do you want to keep them on designated, or is this just a temporary through, through the pandemic?
I, you know, speaking from further myself and the, I, I think for the board, we'd like to keep them designated as a special municipal employee. It allows us to use local nurses that we may have employed in other places as opposed to having a contract from outside or, or chase people down um, from outside of our area. We received, um, a lot of positive feedback from people who have got the calls from local nurses and realizing that there's a somebody that they may know or loosely know or know somebody that's in the, in the community. Um, I think a lot of people are pretty happy hearing from a local nurse that's, that's following up on these, these instances. And whether it's COVID right now, we still have a regular, a regular public health nurse that chases down all the other communicable diseases. Um, so I think it'd be a good thing to, to maintain the future, is my personal opinion. Linda?
Yeah, there's, right now, there's a huge shortage of, uh, public health nurses in the state. And, uh, when the COVID started, I think you guys may have remembered, it was our last in-person meeting. I said that we were going to be utilizing some of the school nurses. In fact, they were doing it on a voluntary basis at first. But as it got more, uh, complicated, um, we offered to be able to start paying them, but they weren't being uh, paid at that time by the school. But because of the conflict of interest laws, um, it's requested that they are able to be a, uh, special municipal employee. It's more of the position than it is the actual persons. So, there's a lot of other people within the town that actually have that same designation.
Okay, anything else? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion that we designate the position of public health nurse to the Sturbridge Board of Health as a special municipal employee and approve the exemption for the conflict of interest in holding more than one municipal position in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 20, 268A, Section 20D, subject to confirmation that contracted nurses can hold such a position.
Second, Chase.
Okay, any discussion? Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ian?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Earring?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you, Ken. Thank you, Linda.
All right, thanks, Chase, have a good night.
Thanks, bye.
Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on selecting a Board of Selectmen member to participate in the selection of the representatives of the Southwest Subregion of Central Massachusetts Metropolitan Planning Organization. Okay, Michael?
Yes.
You already attend these meetings, don't you?
Yes, I do. I, I have for the last, uh, few years and I'd like to continue for this year.
Okay, is there anyone else interested? Okay, is there a motion then?
I'll make a motion to, uh, take Mike Suppan, Board of Selectmen, uh, Representative, First Sturbridge.
I'll sec... I'll second it, Earring.
Okay, any discussion? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Earring, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes.
Thank you, Michael.
Do we need an alternate?
I don't think we've ever had an alternate.
I think I've been the alternate, actually, but I've been needed.
Although, although, you've been the alternate to, um, Central Mass Regional.
Plan, oh, okay.
This is the Southwest District of it. It's a smaller group.
Oh, okay. Good point. Mm-hmm.
Yes?
Can we, uh, jump up to E on the agenda, please?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I just saw it.
All right.
Okay. Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on the amendment to the price of engineering services related to the design of the parking lot at 501 Main Street. Okay, Jeff, you want to explain?
Yes, uh, when we were going through the design of 501 Main Street, we needed some additional detail uh, beyond the original scope in order to submit that project for a Mass Works grant. Uh, roughly 4.25 hours of additional work at their hourly rate, which was included in the contract approved by the board. I just wanted to bring this back to get your verification on the extra $641.89.
Okay, any questions? Someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I will. Um, authorize the payment of the additional $641.89 to CHA on the design work for the parking lot at 501 Main Street.
Second, Chase.
Okay, any discussion? Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Earring?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda, we have old business, COVID-19 update, Jeff?
Um, really not a lot of news. We're still trying to work on the audio element for the board reconvening back in the Board of Selectmen chamber. Um, it's about getting too many inputs into one location and getting feedback. So, hopefully in the next few weeks, we can figure that out or kind of make some necessary amendments to the process to, so the board can come back to the Town Hall Chamber to meet. So, we hope to have some answers on that in the next few weeks. Um, also, we're preparing for voting at Town Hall. The early voting will be held upstairs in the Board of Selectmen Chamber area. Uh, so we'll be making adjustments to our COVID protocols at Town Hall to account for that in terms of cleaning, access, uh, contract chase, contact tracing and, uh, the co-mingling with other staff. So, we'll be meeting, uh, with the staff on that over the next few weeks to make sure that, uh, concerns are addressed and the protocols are met. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions? Okay, next we have new business, the codification review. Jeff, you want to go over this?
Yeah, for those of you that printed it out, this is the, the changes to the code. Any comment? Okay. Um, a lot of it is technical, grammatical, uh, nothing structural really, because we didn't pay code to make wholesale revisions, we made them to make, you know, consistency changes, uh, statute references, uh, grammatical corrections, consistency factors. So, at some point, the Board of Selectmen will have to kind of review these minor adjustments and make recommendations, and also make some choices on some other items, uh, as outlined in the, in the document. It's a lot, um, to read and digest. So, what would be the board's pleasure on going through this? You want to go through it on your own and send me comments? Do you want to pick a night and kind of have a discussion as you leaf through it? Um, you want to leave it up to staff to make a recommendation? Um, what's your pleasure on that? I don't want to assume anything on your behalf.
Okay, any input from the board? Okay?
Obviously, Jeff, you know this and far be it for me to, to read that document and think that I'm going to understand it better than you will. If you could make a recommendation on it or highlight some of the things that are, you know, maybe we need to make a decision on?
Okay, I can highlight some changes that may be, um, more pertinent to the board's decision than others. We can do that.
I, I personally think that if, um, everyone can read it individually, it is a lot, but it's not real difficult to read it. And everything in it does not pertain to what the Board of Selectmen does or, you know, what we have to follow. So, if everyone, I believe, read it themselves and got their input back to Jeff, I think that would be helpful. How's the rest of the board feel? Okay?
Yes, that, that sounds good.
Earring?
That sounds reasonable, yes. Is he, is Jeff still going to highlight some of the more important stuff that Ian?
Yes.
All right, yeah, that's the approach.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, I, I, I feel that, you know, if Jeff goes through it and makes his comments and then we each individually put a second set of eyes on it, I think we would have the best product that way.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Okay, and I'll bet you?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Okay, next? We have correspondence.
Well, do we have more new, um...
All right, we're still on new business. Any new business, Ian?
No.
Mike?
No.
Mary?
Yeah, I just have one thing, I was going to bring it up under COVID, but, um, I'll bring it under new business. I've been a big proponent for the Town Hall monitors, but I'm just wondering if there might be a way to make their experience a little bit safer. Um, the reason I say this is, I've come into the Town Hall a few times and there's really, there's not six feet of space between when people enter and they're giving their name and who they're going to see. And really, those monitors are actually being exposed to more of the public than our town clerk, than our Board of, than our assessor, because they're the point of contact no matter what office they're going to. So, I feel like, you know, maybe Robin and Jeff can brainstorm, we do have COVID money to be even a desk that's six feet apart or some kind of shield. We're using our senior citizens and I just feel like we could, we could do something um, so that they're not exposed on top of, of the public as they come in, similar to what we've done for staff.
Sounds good.
I mean, yeah.
Yep.
That's it, thanks for new business.
Okay, Chase, do you have any new business?
I have no new, thank you.
Ian? No.
No, ma'am.
Okay, and I have none. So, that brings us to correspondence.
Are we going to do old business? Is that after correspondence? I don't have mine.
No, I probably skipped it. Old business with COVID. Do you have other old business, Mary?
Yeah, I just have one other thing. Thank you, Jeff, for the memo of your update. I know under the Equestrian Park, we have timeframes for different approvals that are still being worked out. Um, I still would like some kind of summary of what, under the law, what it takes to approve the racetrack, um, in the state. I mean, I know we were told that we need to have a public hearing, but under what, you know, Mass General Law, what is our standard for review? What's the criteria for that public hearing? Because I still, you know, I still don't totally know what the process is other than the fact that we need the zoning change, which is kind of business as usual. So, if, if somebody could prepare that or council could prepare that, um, for, for racetracks, because I'm getting questions and I really don't know, I've never had a public hearing for a racetrack before, so that would be helpful for me.
Yeah, that's in development. Um, we've been working with them. You know, there's really not been a lot of movement on this other than review of the bylaw, proposed bylaw, which still is in draft form. So, they're still trying to work out their timeframes and they have a lot of different moving parts to bring together before they actually really move this along. But we will put together, you know, the flow chart and the decision matrix for the board.
Okay, that's all I'm looking for. And what, what MGL, it falls under this public hearing that's before the board, that's...
Right.
Because that's the law on the...
Okay, anyone else have old business? Okay, correspondence, Mike?
Yes, we have a letter that was, uh, sent by our town administrator, Jeff Bridges, to, uh, Mr. Wondolowski, uh, who, uh, uh, was the, one of the signers of the, um, uh, the petition for 66 Woodside Drive. And, um, excuse me. And, um, the, uh, the letter is dated September 14th and it uh, just simply states that, uh, that the trigger for, um, for, uh, purchasing the at, uh, Woodside Drive, or at least the town having the right of first has not been met yet because, uh, there is, there has been no notice that, that the, uh, there's any intent to change the use of the land. So, at this time, the town doesn't have the right of first refusal, but if we get such a notice, then, then we could deal with it then.
Okay, with the good letter, Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have?
Very specific.
Anyone else have correspondence? Okay, next we have minutes of September 9th. Anyone have any? Oh, Jeff?
Yeah, Andrea's not on this call, so if you have changes, just read them and she'll pick it up, uh, off the recording. Um, so...
Okay, anyone have corrections?
I believe I'm at this meeting, so.
Yeah, you, you don't have any?
Yeah, she, she just had me present, though. That's, that's the-
Oh, yeah, no, I was going to correct that. She got you on all the votes apps and so, yep. Okay, Mary?
I just want to add one thing on page 171. It's the paragraph, um, dealing with Mary Lou Volpe's retirement. Um, at the end of this sentence that reads, Chair Blanchard and the members of the board acknowledged her for making a big difference in the town and the community. Can we just add the following phrase, and for being the first woman appointed to this position in the town of Sturbridge? Because I think that's kind of a big deal, and that's it.
Okay, anyone else have anything? Okay, I have on that same page, up at the top, under the paragraph, um, about the consideration of Mary Lou Volpe, the next to the last line, Mary Lou does not have a E at the end.
Hmm.
And on page 176, the top paragraph, our last sentence says about 508 International applies for an entertainment license in Sturbridge. That should be, um, Southbridge, I believe. And the paragraph under that-
I mean it.
Uh, third line down in the middle, it says Chair Blanchard explained that if someone is entrusted in buying the property, town would need to be notified, and then they would have the right to take a look at purchasing it. Um, right after property, we need to insert in changing the U. That's the trigger for the right of perusal refusal. Geez, anyone else have anything else?
Can we-
Yes?
Can we revisit that sentence on 508 International on the first paragraph, top of the page? Um, we, I think Sturbridge is-
I was confused.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Wasn't it about them applying for an entertainment license in Southbridge, and then they withdrew it from the Board of Selectmen meeting?
They, they don't, I don't know that they're in Southbridge. I think they're in Sturbridge and Charlton.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, it's Charlton.
Yeah.
Right, it's, it's in Charl- Charlton's in the second sentence of that paragraph, and then we talk about what ifs, and then it gets into Sturbridge.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but it was Charlton that they, uh, were applying for.
Right.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, um, Citizens Forum.
Let me check. Oh, did you vote on the minutes?
Oh, is there a motion to approve the minutes as it ended?
So move, Mike.
Your second?
Second, Mary.
Okay, any discussion? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Hey, Shubstain? And I vote yes. Okay, now Citizens Forum.
Good evening. Is there anyone to speak to the Board of Selectmen in the Citizens Forum? Good evening. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the Board of Selectmen at the Citizens Forum?
No one's on the line, and there's no emails?
Hey, is there a motion to adjourn then?
Couple of things.
Oh, that-
Sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Um, Alexandra starts on Thursday, so there'll be some training, and Alex will be joining us on meetings from now on. Um, at your next meeting, you have two public hearings on propane, uh, propane storage places, de-leo gas and sale gas, so you'll have that on your agenda as well. So, that's where we are.
Okay, now is there a motion to adjourn?
Approve, Chase.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Ian?
Any discussion? Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you all, and have a good night.
You too.
And Jeff, sorry, sorry I got you messed up, Jeff, with those two letters out of place.